Okay, so we are now able to record the meeting. It is not streaming, so, but hopefully that will resolve itself here as we have, our company is on its way apparently. So, back to where we left off, we do have a quorum present, and now I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven zero, we have approved the agenda. Next, we will have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person or five minutes representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM end of business day to the city clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@sumamish.us. Please be aware, council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. Of note, we have several public hearings. If your comments are relative to the public hearings, you need to make those comments at the public hearings for them to be a part of the public record for that hearing. So this would be general public comment here. So first, I have Donovan, and I think it says Albrecht. Is that for the public hearing? Okay. And next, I have Isabel Morocco. Oh. No, there's not, but our city clerk will be happy to get one.
Sounds like it. Seems like it.
I'm still not on. Are you on?
Nope.
Especially I rebooted me.
As long as you downloaded your packet, there shouldn't be any issue. I mean... But as long as you've downloaded your packet, there probably isn't really a need, I don't think, for Wi-Fi.
Is this on then?
Yeah.
So this is working, right? My name's Isabel Morocco. I live at 4009 239th Place, Southeast in Summer Meadows, Sumamish. And I'm here tonight mainly concerning the YMCA and what's been found out. And the first thing I want to do is express my intense gratitude to Tom and Chris for bringing up all that information and doing their due diligence. I watched the video of your special meeting on the 28th, and I was pretty impressed on what you had to present, even though I felt you were shut down quite a bit, unfortunately, and people got off track. But I feel it's really important that those discrepancies in the reporting from the Y be pursued. And I'm hoping that this council gets behind this 100% because these are taxpayer money. And, you know, we plunked 25 point something million dollars into that facility, plus the value of the land, which nobody even talks about, plus we're paying taxes on it, which nobody even talks about. And Tom brought up a good point. It's your fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to get that all squared away with the Y. So I hope you hang on to them like a tick on a dog, because this is really, really serious. I'm really glad you found out about them expensing depreciation, which is accounting 101, by the way. And the fact that they want us to pay on their loan, I just about fell off my chair on that. And I could be mixed up on my information here. And those three, what you call bucket, those three reserve funds, I think, need to be extremely watched. And I don't know where they have the money in that. I don't know if it's commingled. I don't know how they keep track of that. But those funds, in my estimation, should be reconciled on a monthly basis, and those reports should be gotten to us more frequently than one year. I don't know, you talked about a report that they submit, report for 2018. I don't know whether that's a really financial report according to the GAAP standards, but I hope it is. And all that stuff needs to be reconciled. And I wouldn't be not in favor of having, if we don't get good answers from them, of having an audit. I think you're absolutely right about that, and I wouldn't mind the taxpayers for, you know, even paying for that, because we're looking at 20 some odd years in the future. And if that accounting isn't right, then we're, you know, they're hosing us. So what did I miss? I guess a couple of things I was upset with was some council members during that meeting kind of dismissing the importance of it. And I want to reiterate, that's the fiduciary responsibility of this council, the entire council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Okay, we will close public comment here. Next, I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven zero, the consent calendar has been approved. Okay, next, we'll move to presentations and proclamations. We have several public hearings tonight. The first public hearing and deliberation is on a site-specific land use map amendment for parcel 1241100042. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, Council. With that, I will turn it over to David Pyle, and we'll start this public hearing.
Good evening. David Pyle, Community Development. The first item on your agenda tonight for public hearings is the proposed site-specific land use map amendment, an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan land use map for the Santoni parcel, which is located just south of the Ichijo project off of 228th. We are here tonight to present to you the facts as we understand them and help the council with any questions you have around this proposal. This is not a staff-initiated proposal. This is a property owner-initiated proposal, and as such, we are responsible for processing it and bringing it to you for your consideration. I'll turn it over to Miriam Leitner, Senior Management Analyst with the city, and there she is.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll be starting with some background information on the site-specific land use map amendment process before going over the proposal that was received and then the review process that occurred. I'll then go over the different options for city council consideration before handing things over to the applicant to provide their presentation. After this, we'll open things up for questions, followed by the public hearing and deliberation. So I wanted to start tonight's presentation with a quick overview of the comprehensive plan amendment and site-specific amendments. Sumamish operates under the Growth Management Act, which directs cities to do a periodic update to the comprehensive plan every eight years. In between periodic updates, we have the annual review, and during the annual review, applicants can request a site-specific land use map amendment, which changes the designation of a property on the comprehensive plan's future land use map, or text amendments, which change the text of the comprehensive plan or our city's development regulations. So tonight's application is a result of a site-specific land use map amendment proposal that was docketed during the annual review in 2017. We also wanted to spend some time going over how a site-specific land use map amendment fits into the broader development picture. So before a site-specific land use map amendment application can be submitted, a docket request has to be submitted and docketed. Docket requests can be submitted year-round, with the submitted request being pulled once a year, and then presented to Planning Commission and City Council, with the City Council deciding which requests warrant further consideration the following year by placing those on the docket. One thing to note is that the four-month time estimate that you see on screen is an estimation based on the amount of time from the annual deadline until when City Council sets the docket. So in some cases, it can take longer, like it did for the applicants here tonight who are impacted by the building moratorium. Once a request's been docketed, an applicant can submit their site-specific land use map amendment application. This application provides more detailed information about the property, the proposal, and the potential impacts related to approval. Once review's been completed by staff, the application proceeds to legislative review, with City Council making the decision on whether the application is approved or denied. If the application is approved by City Council, the applicant can proceed with submitting a zone reclassification application. And if the application is approved by the hearing examiner, then the zoning for that parcel will be changed on the city's zoning map. So hopefully, these steps that I just described sound familiar, because they were part of what was recently reviewed, updated, and adopted as part of Title 24A, which was completed earlier this year by Planning Commission and City Council. Once a zone reclassification is approved, the applicant can submit a land use application, such as a unified zone development plan, a binding site plan, or a preliminary subdivision. These applications are reviewed by staff to ensure that new development meets the standards outlined in our code. The standards address things like setbacks, tree retention, building dimensions, critical areas, open space, vehicle and pedestrian access, parking, and other areas. Land use applications, as you know, are really complex, with specific plans, reports, and supporting documents required as part of submittal. In addition to hosting neighborhood meetings or open houses, applicants are also required to provide site plans, code compliance narratives, a traffic concurrency certificate, stormwater and traffic reports, and other materials. For town center projects, land use applications are also reviewed to ensure that they support responsible and coordinated growth and development within the town center subarea. Depending on the type of project that's being proposed, the land use application approval decision is either made by the Community Development Director or the hearing examiner. Once approved, an applicant can apply for a site development permit, which is the phase of work where you'll start to see clearing and grading activity after site improvements are complete and inspections conducted to ensure that the work was done in compliance. And once site development is complete, the applicant can apply for a building permit. After the permits have been issued and the work is done and inspections conducted, and if everything's okay, a certificate of occupancy is issued, and this really marks the official end of the project, and residents can start moving in. Altogether, the permit and construction process typically takes two to three years. This is on top of the time that it takes to get through the comprehensive plan amendment and associated rezone, which can take approximately two years to complete. So right now, the applicants are currently here in this process. The proposal that you're considering tonight only changes how a parcel can be used in the future. So issues related to tree retention, critical areas, the number of housing units, and others would be addressed during the land use stage and are regulated by the city's zoning controls. So now, on to the proposal itself. The applicants are Frank and Maureen Santoni, and you'll be hearing from them in a bit. Their property is located in Town Center, just off of 228th Avenue Southeast via Southeast 6th Place, and is almost two and a half acres in size. And they're proposing to change the future land use map designation of their property from TCE to TCA. Here, you'll see an aerial view of their property on the left, and then the zoning of the entire Town Center area on the right, with the Santoni property outlined in blue. Adjoining properties, as you can see, are designated as TCE, TCA, and TCB. We wanted to show a high-level overview of the different zoning designations within Town Center so that you can better understand what's being requested. Each zone in Town Center has an allocated density as well as a maximum density, and the maximum density can be achieved through two different public benefit programs, also known as incentive programs, which are the Affordable Housing Pool and the Transfer of Development Rights Program. And the reason we've chosen to show both of these densities is because, once the zoning's changed, these two incentive programs could be used to achieve the maximum density. So it's really important for council to consider the full range of options for future possibilities when making your decision. Town Center has five different zoning designations, each with different goals. TCA is the mixed-use zone with a pedestrian-oriented mix of retail, office space, residential, and public uses. TCB is the mixed residential zone with a variety of housing types, including apartments, townhomes, and then a limited number of single-family residential duplexes and cottages. There's also some limited commercial opportunity for properties bordering TCA properties but located in the TCB zone. TCC is the lower-intensity residential zone, includes predominantly single-family homes, townhomes, and cottages, and this zone is intended to act as a buffer to existing residential areas that are outside of Town Center. TCD is the civic campus zone focused on maintaining and enhancing the Sumamish Commons and other complementary civic uses. And then finally, TCE is the reserve zone, which allows current uses to remain while saving the opportunity for future development, and only single-family detached dwelling units are permitted in that zone. So as previously mentioned, the applicants are currently in TCE, and they're proposing that it be changed to TCA. One issue that's unique to the TCE zone is that while there's language indicating that the zone preserves the opportunity for future development, there's really no direction on how or when any rezoning should occur. Typically, staff look to our code and to official planning documents like the comprehensive plan for guidance and direction on topics like that. However, in this case, both the comprehensive plan and the Sumamish Municipal Code simply state that the purpose of the reserve zone, TCE, is to allow current uses to remain while preserving the opportunity for future development, and it really doesn't provide much more information than that. The Town Center Plan states that an E-zone designation could only be changed through future amendment to the comprehensive plan. It also recommends that the city periodically reevaluate development caps for Town Center and give suggestions of when that could be done, like when one-third of the maximum development cap is reached. But because there's no guidance on how specifically to address TCE, staff have followed the protocols for a site-specific land use map amendment and zone reclassification, which are outlined in our code. So as previously mentioned, the docket request for the site-specific land use map amendment was submitted and docketed back in 2017, but because site-specific land use map amendments weren't included on the exemption list related to the building moratorium, review of the application couldn't begin until the moratorium was lifted. The applicants submitted their application in early March of 2019, and staff determined it to be complete on March 27th. A notice of application was then issued, and one public comment was received during the comment period, and you'll see that in Exhibit 1 of your packet. It's important to note that while the application was under review, Title 24 was adopted, and this changed the process of how the application would be reviewed. So under Title 24, the applicants were allowed to submit their site-specific land use map amendment and their zone reclassification application together for concurrent review, but under Title 24A, these two processes were separated. So the city attorney notified the applicant's attorney of this process change and presented two options for moving forward in regard to SEPA review. Since the application started as a concurrent application, it was now being separated into two different processes. So the first option was to complete the SEPA review just for the site-specific land use map amendment, and then do the required limited scope traffic impact analysis as part of the zone reclassification SEPA review if the site-specific land use map amendment gets approved. The second option was to complete the SEPA review for both the site-specific land use map amendment and zone reclassification concurrently, including that required limited scope traffic impact analysis. Under this option, the traffic impact analysis would have been completed prior to the site-specific land use map amendment going to legislative review. The applicants chose to move forward with the first option of completing the SEPA review for the site-specific land use map amendment only. So following internal technical review, including consultation with our project consultants that you'll be hearing from shortly, the city made a determination of nonsignificance for the site-specific land use map amendment and issued a notice of SEPA determination in late June, and there were no comments received during that comment period. Following closure of the SEPA comment period and completion of staff analysis, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 19th and voted 5 to 2 to recommend the approval of the site-specific land use map amendment with a change in the designation to TCB. Notice for tonight's public hearing was issued on October 21st, and you can find all the questions and comments received by the city for both the Planning Commission public hearing as well as the City Council public hearing, included in Exhibit 6. And these have been updated to include everything that was received up until this evening. So because Title 24A went into effect after the site-specific land use map amendment application was already submitted, this application has to be reviewed using the criteria that were included in Title 24. The applicants have provided detailed responses to each of the criteria that you see on screen, but I'll be providing a summary of those responses as we go through each of the criteria. So you can find the full responses in the criteria compliance narrative, which is included with the application materials, which are hyperlinked in the background section of this agenda item in your packets, and I'll pause for a moment in case anybody wants to pull those up. Okay, so starting with Criteria A, the applicants state that they're seeking a rezoning of their property from TCE to TCA, and they cite the definition of TCE found in the code. They state that the property was designated as TCE so that a group of longstanding homeowners in the city's urban center could remain in place without having significant tax increases resulting from Town Center zoning changes. They provided a letter from a former planning commissioner that served during the time when the TCE zone was created to show the intent of council related to the TCE zone. Moving on to Criteria B, the applicants state that the proposed change would bring the property into conformity with the nearby parcels and note a small traffic impact on 228th as there's already a driveway access via Southeast 6th Place. Responding to Criteria C, the applicants state that as a result of the Town Center redevelopment, they've lost their privacy and they're now forced to sell. They cite Comprehensive Plan Policy LU 1.2, which talks about complementary and compatible development and smooth transitions between different land uses, and that this hasn't been what they've experienced with the adjacent TCA property. The applicant is planning to eventually sell their property and believe that this change would allow future development to be in line with the Town Center plan and adjacent uses. Responding to Criteria D, the applicants provide an explanation of how their proposal addresses each of the 13 GMAT planning goals. And moving on to Criteria E, the applicants state that their property would have been zoned TCA, just as the adjacent property to the north, if they decided not to stay there. Additionally, they state that the proposal presents an opportunity for creating communities within Town Center and would not have an adverse impact on the main property owner to the south. They also state that several comprehensive plan policies and goals encourage development of single-family residences and non-resident uses with options that reduce the need to drive, and they believe this proposal would help encourage that. In response to Criteria F, the applicants state that while this application is not related to a development project, the proposed change is in line with the capital improvements being implemented in the Town Center. And they state that Criteria G will occur after the application's submittal, which the city is assuming refers to the various public comment opportunities. Moving on to Criteria A, under the review criteria specifically for site-specific land use map amendments, the applicants again cite Comprehensive Plan Policy LU 1.2 relating to the promotion of complementary and compatible development and smooth transitions between different land uses, and that they believe the intention for their property was for it to eventually become TCA. And then finally, in response to Criteria B, they state that their proposal will not have an adverse impact on the main property owner to the south, which is the Sumamish Hills Lutheran Church. So to review the application, staff working with our consultant reached out to the school district, the Sumamish Police Department, Puget Sound Energy, Sumamish Plateau Water, and Eastside Fire and Rescue to better understand the potential impacts to area service providers should this proposal be approved. The information that was gathered was integrated into our consultant's memo, which you'll find in Exhibit 2. As part of the staff review and analysis of the comprehensive plan, the Town Center Subarea Plan, and Title 21B of the Sumamish Municipal Code was conducted to identify required changes so this proposal be approved, and those findings are detailed in Exhibit 4 of your packets. Additionally, the city determined that a SEPA analysis was needed to see how the proposal aligned with the Town Center final environmental impact statement and determine if environmental review would be needed in addition to that. So the city asked its land use consultant, AHBL, to do the SEPA analysis, and then AHBL contracted with Heffron Transportation, Inc., a qualified traffic impact consultant, to conduct an analysis of the traffic assessment that was submitted by the applicant. So I'm going to now hand things over to Colin Poff from AHBL and Michelle Brown from Heffron so that they can discuss their analysis and findings in more detail.
Hello, my name is Colin Poff. I'm with AHBL, and we're a consultant working with the city to assist with this review of the site-specific land use map amendment. But specifically, the scope of our kind of task that we were asked to help with is to evaluate the proposed TCA zoning and evaluate it as it relates to the final environmental impact statement that was done for the Town Center plan back in 2007. So we are looking to see if the TCA zoning is consistent with what is in that environmental impact statement, if the impacts that are evaluated in the environmental impact statement include those that might incur from a change to TCA zoning, and then give a recommendation to the city's SEPA official of if any additional environmental analysis is appropriate, whether that be supplemental EIS, or an addendum, or determination of nonsignificance. So generally speaking, our finding was that a TCA zoning was consistent with what you'll find in the environmental impact statement, and we have a little bit of analysis that we'll share that kind of shows the logic there. And we recommended a non-project SEPA determination of nonsignificance for this, just for this land use map amendment. So we weren't asked to look at necessarily the merits of a land use change, just as how it relates to these 2007 final environmental impact statement. So that environmental impact statement looked at potential land use impacts, various land use impacts in the Town Center, provided alternatives, and a preferred alternative, and also talked about a specific development capacity. So within that EIS, you'll see that there are development assumptions, meaning that they assumed a development capacity of 2,000, maximum of 2,000 housing units, and up to 400,000 square feet of commercial space. So that's kind of a development capacity or a limit, if you will, that is assumed in the EIS. And the zoning in the Town Center matches that development capacity as it is, as the zoning is today. So to reiterate, our finding was that the zoning was consistent, and we recommend this non-project SEPA DNS. So note that when I say non-project DNS, that means that this is a map amendment, there's no actual project proposed, no development. So when actually a development comes in, then you would see mitigation at the project level as well, so you would see a chance for environmental review there. So we did also recommend with our analysis that a limited scope traffic analysis be done. And just for a moment, I want to hand it over to Michelle Brown with Heffron, who we contracted with, to review the traffic impacts, so she can speak to that just for a moment.
Thank you, Colin. This is Michelle Brown with Heffron Transportation. We were asked by the city of Sumamish to review the traffic assessment that was completed for the Santoni property located within the Sumamish Town Center Subarea, and at that time, our review was focused on the potential zoning redesignations from TCE to TCA. So in our evaluation, that included a review of specific elements, specifically within several documents, such as the Town Center Subarea, DEIS and FEIS, the Municipal Code, the Comprehensive Plan, and TSI's traffic assessment for this parcel, and also the SEPA checklist that was submitted for the Santoni rezon application. And based on these documents, the proposed zoning could allow up to about 38 mid-rise residential units and about 23,000 square feet of commercial space. So our review basically addressed two questions, which was, the first one, did the city of Sumamish Town Center Subarea Plan EIS account for additional trips that could be generated by this rezon? And number two, should any additional analysis be performed to address the site-specific impacts? And the answer to the first question was yes. A comparison based on the traffic estimates generated by the city's most recent traffic model showed that the EIS evaluated impacts that would be greater than what would be generated today under the additional zoning with the property. And the second, the answer to the second question is also yes, that in the next phase of the process, as Colin mentioned, that a limited traffic impact analysis should be done for the southeast quadrant because they're reallocating some development from other quadrants to this quadrant. So while the overall trip generation for the property, the entire land use, would not change or be actually less, but the reallocation of zoning, or the reallocation of trips would change a bit for the southeast, excuse me, southeast quadrant. And that's all that we had for now. Thank you.
I think we have a council question real quick, if we can. Councilor Wornish.
I've got a question for Colin, is that right?
That's right.
I noticed in your memo, report, whatever you want to call it, on page 3, and maybe this is more of a question for staff, I'm not exactly sure, but, and I think you just went over it a second ago, that the maximum TCA density went over it a second ago, that the maximum TCA density is 40 dwelling units per acre, correct? And then on page three, there's a highlight on Sky-Samamish that shows the achieved density at 96 dwelling units per acre. Can somebody explain to me how we have twice the maximum for Sky-Samamish, over twice?
So we're going to call up Kelly Hildy, Planning Manager, who's more versed on our town center, the zoning, and how the density calculations work and what bonuses are available. And she should be able to help explain this.
So Sky Apartments is part of the TRF or market development. It was three phases of development. They calculated their density by taking the allocated density for the, I believe it was two B zones and two A zones, and then achieving maximum density with the affordable housing pool. So that is how they got to their density calculation.
So how many affordable housing units were there?
I do not know offhand.
It would have to be 40 per acre. Do you know how many acres it is? Or it'd be 46 per acre. No, 56.
No, probably would be 10% of that.
No, no, no. If they got to 96 and the excess over the 40 max is due to affordable housing, that's 56 affordable housing units per acre.
Yeah, without the actual density calculations in front of me, I can't comment on that.
Could we get a follow-up on that? Because I'm just really confused of how we got that dense when we have a 40 max.
I agree. So I have the town center plan in front of me and it actually says that it's 40 DU per acre max with the available incentives. Otherwise, in the A1 through A5 zone, it's 16 dwelling units per acre allocation.
Yes, we can definitely follow up with those calculations and get that information to you. Thank you.
And a question for Heffron, if I could. I guess I read the memo, but I didn't quite understand what you just said, that there was a reallocation of the trips to the southeast quadrant. I mean, I kind of read the AHBL memo and your memo to say there's a reallocation in all of the quadrants, or even in the southern quadrant, southeast quadrant, as to the housing units, dwelling units that would be allocated in that southeast or where they actually go if you upzone this parcel. But was there a specific as to additional traffic that would be reallocated? Is that what you said in your presentation?
So there's a, like you said, there's a cap on the number of dwelling units for the entire subarea. So then-
Are you talking the quadrant or the whole?
The whole, the whole entire, yeah, the whole entire thing. So the way that they allocate, so if they're adding 38 units in the southeast quadrant, then that would come from another quadrant. So you could have maybe less in the northwest quadrant and then you'd have more compared to the EIS with this rezone, but just more in the southeast quadrant. But overall-
Still the same.
Yeah, or less, less actually, yeah.
So then to follow up a little bit, and I think you kind of mentioned it, but I wasn't quite sure with the two-step and the San Tonys choosing option one to do the SEPA review only, is there a traffic impact analysis that still needs to be done before this moves forward? Is that correct?
Not for when it moves forward, but it would come for the land, what's it called?
Reclassification.
Yeah, the rezone reclassification after that.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
You can say it, Maryam.
It would come with the rezone that follows the, this is the land use map amendment, and then a rezone would follow this, so the limited scope traffic analysis would be with the rezone.
So there's two steps for this to get rezoned. Is the first step is the land use map tonight, and then there's going to be a second step of the rezoning that would have to have the traffic impact analysis done?
Correct.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
That was all the questions we had up here, at least for the moment.
Thank you for bringing that up and we'll follow up with looking at that calculation, but I am also going to talk about the development cap, that 2,000 maximum unit cap a little bit and how it works. I'll discuss a little bit about how the affordable housing pool works as well, so hopefully that will shed a little bit of light on this. Quickly in front of you with this slide, you'll see on the left is the zoning of the town center. And on the right are the quadrants that Michelle talked about, the four quadrants within the town center. You'll actually see that in the town center plan, this was additionally looked at as a TCB zone. So TCE is the reserve zoning, but they looked at this as TCB, so the town center actually envisages this as a slightly more dense area with townhomes and apartments. So that's worth noting. On the right, the quadrants are there because it's to evaluate, you could say, localized impacts for each quadrant. And within the entire town center, there's a development cap of 2,000 units, but there's also an allocated amount of units for each quadrant. So in the southeast quadrant, there are 362 allocated housing units. And so we were, we wanted to look into that and do a little bit of an analysis to kind of ground-truth it. So we used GIS to compare the allocated zoning to each parcel and if it were built out under the allocated zoning and what kind of actual units you might actually be able to achieve. If you look at the map on the left, you'll see that there's a large wetland going through the east of most of the parcels. So the way that this is calculated is that you take out the wetland and the wetland buffer out of your density calculation. And by doing that, you take out a lot of acreage. So when we did our calculation, we found that, we found that there's capacity for 257 units in the southeast quadrant under the allocated zoning. So that's compared to the 362 that were studied or that were allocated to that quadrant. So even with maximum build-out with allocated density, you would fall short of what is actually allocated. And of that number, so far, 75 have been actually built in the southeast quadrant.
So I think we have a couple of questions, if you can maybe just go back a slide. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, could you just clarify again? So this will be to update the map-
Yes.
But you said to actually do the rezoning is a separate step. So what does that mean if we update the map, but we still haven't rezoned it? That seems somehow disjointed.
So this is a two-step process. So your approval for the site-specific land use map amendment would be contingent on the zone reclassification application getting approved by the hearing examiner. And the ordinance that we attached to the Agenda Bill is drafted in a way that indicates that contingent approval and sets up the process.
So we are, though, in essence, we are approving that rezoning, we're just waiting to get confirmation from the hearing examiner. Is that correct?
Yes and no, because you'll still have other things to consider as part of the zone reclassification, like that limited scope TIA.
So we would have to come back and vote on this again? After the hearing examiner looked at it?
No.
No.
So by approving this tonight, we are in essence approving contingent upon the hearing examiner's decision, we are approving both, the map and the rezoning.
Correct, with the caveat that tonight you'll be doing a provisional approval because this would have to be considered with all of the other comp plan amendments for the year. So, but yes.
So can you clarify if we're voting on this particular thing once or twice, please? Sorry, that's still not clear to me.
It's once.
Okay.
Maybe I can take a shot at this, too. The council has the authority, in fact, the obligation, to adopt amendments to the comprehensive plan. And that's what this would be, an amendment to the land use map in the comprehensive plan. Since the San Tony parcel is just one piece of, one parcel, it is a site-specific rezone. That's a quasi-judicial matter that the council does not act on, the hearing examiner acts on. So if you approve this tonight, it will be contingent on the hearing examiner similarly approving the rezone request. It is possible that the examiner would say no, and then your contingency would kick in and this map amendment would also not be valid.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Going back to the headwaters for where George Davis Creek is, I've got a concern of going from an R1 to all of a sudden switching the zoning from an R1 to going to an A1. That is going from one extreme to the other extreme. So I'm assuming that was perhaps why the planning commission went with the B on there? Is that, can you give me a little background of?
I do believe that the planning commission was looking at the TCB as kind of a middle ground between what they have now and the TCA designation, which is the most dense. And I think also knowing that it was considered as a TCB in the final environmental impact statement and played into that as well.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you. Process-wise, I just want to make sure we were kind of trying to understand the process down here a little bit. So I guess more to the city attorney, this is, whatever we vote on tonight, assuming if we do vote to move forward with a site-specific rezone tonight, we will be voting again land use amendment tonight, not rezone. Hearing examiner will handle the rezone. Thank you. We will be voting on this again along with a package, a package, a set, several, I would assume, comp plan amendments early in 2020. Correct. At that point, we have, this council has the ability to change, alter, remove those comp plan amendments at that time? Or are we setting our document and it cannot be changed, period, full stop? Are we going to up and down on the whole set? How does that work in terms of, I just want to know what our power is, what our leverage is here going forward?
Counsel retains its full legislative discretion in early 2020 when this packet comes to you. It comes to you as a packet because staff processes these on an individual basis, but you'll recall that absent an emergency or a couple of other exceptions, you can only adopt amendments to the comp plan once a year. So that's why we sort of do them on this informal basis. You know you've been presented the material, you've made your decision, and we've checked the box and put it aside until we can bring it all to you at one time. But when it all comes back to you at one time, you still have full legislative discretion.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at, and I appreciate that, that's really, for me, it's good to have another look at things, right? If new information comes down the pike, right, we want to be able to take a look at things. If we're going down this path and if we decide tonight to rezone, rezone the property, am I saying that correctly?
Land use map amendment.
Land use map amendment. I'm going to get it tomorrow. If something changes between, say, oh, I don't know, November 25th and January, whatever, when we do have the comp plan amendments come up, if new information comes in, we still have the ability to change, pull out, amend that comp plan amendment up until the date or the day we actually vote on those comp plan amendments. Is that accurate?
It is accurate. It would create some ripples, some substantial ripples with respect, if, and counsel retains that legislative discretion. But to the extent applicants have been granted this provisional approval, if you will, if it were to be changed at the end of the line, then there would be some issues to deal with there.
And I'm with you. And I don't know that everyone would want to go down that path. I'm saying that more to Councilmember, sorry, Deputy Mayor Moran's position, that this is a significant change and were we to make the change tonight, if there were any intervening facts that changed between now and that time, we still have the ability to alter the comp plan amendment up until that point, if I'm hearing you correctly.
You have the ability, if it were to be approved tonight-
Yes.
-you would have the ability in early 2020 when the whole package comes to you-
Right.
-to decline to approve one or more of them then.
So we are voting on it twice. Is that a fair statement?
I'm sorry?
So we are voting on it two separate times? Is that procedurally for us as a council? And I just want to make sure that that, I mean-
Yeah, you are, you'll be taking two votes. I just want to be clear, tonight is, would be effectively an informal approval-
Right.
-because of that one annual comp plan adoption provision. So this would not have regulatory effect. It would have the effect of putting it in the queue for your early 2020 approval and sending the rezone application to the hearing examiner.
We're teeing it up. We're putting on the comp plan calendar or the comp plan amendment, we're setting it up for January, whenever that is, and we're sending it over the hearings examiner. That's what tonight's vote may or may not translate into. Is that what we're doing?
Right.
Thank you.
I think we've cleared all the questions.
Can we clarify one point as part of that last statement by Councilmember Ritchie? So this would not go to the hearing examiner until after the formal comprehensive plan amendment was made, which would then enable the application for rezone to proceed. We cannot move forward with the rezone until the comprehensive plan land use map has changed, at which point we would then go through the entire process of the rezone, which would include notice of application, comment, period, SEPA analysis. And then that would be a recommendation to the hearing examiner, the hearing would be set, hearing would be held, and the hearing examiner would make a decision in accordance with the examiner's rules of procedures.
I think you can proceed.
Shall I proceed? So like I said, in a moment, I'll talk about the development caps. I'll also talk a little bit more about allocated density versus the use of affordable housing, the affordable housing pool. But just to reiterate, that was a discussion there on the right of the allocated zoning for each quadrant and how we ground-truth that with an analysis and looked at what could be built under the allocated zoning. And then on the next slide, you'll see the outline of the whole town center again. Again, there's a 2,000 unit cap or limit that was studied in the FEIS for that entire area. The planning horizon for this town center plan was set to 30 years, so we're halfway through that planning horizon. And 336 total units have been built, either built or are permitted in the town center. So that's 16% of that development cap. So it is quite some time before we actually start to approach numbers like that. So like I said, this is a cap or a limit. Through the allocated density of each parcel, you can achieve 1,656 units. So that means there's a remaining 344 units that are in the affordable housing pool. So that's kind of a first-come, first-served pool of incentives that individual applicants can use on their project. So if a TCA applicant is a maximum of 16 dwelling units per acre, they can build by right at that density, but they may be able to tap into an affordable housing pool to using incentives to build at a higher density, up to a maximum of 40 dwelling units per acre. However, that, there is still that 2,000 limit within the town center. So even if incentives are used for an individual property, you can't exceed that 2,000 unit limit overall unless additional study is done or supplemental EIS or amendment to the town center.
Before you go forward, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I want to go back to this 2,000 number because what is being stated here and what's in the HBL report as well as what's in the town center plan conflict with that a little bit, so I'd like to get a little bit more clarity. So page 26 of our town center plan says, "This adopted plan establishes an upper limit for development in the town center of 2,000 dwelling units and 600,000 square feet of commercial development. This means the maximum build-out allowed outright by zoning should remain, should remain within these limits. However, the implementation of a transfer of development rights program could exceed these allocations." Can I get some explanation on that? Because you're saying this is TDRs and that's not what this is saying, saying it can exceed.
Yeah, I can provide a little clarification. I'm not extremely familiar with the transfer of development rights program, but that is true, that the affordable housing pool is something different. Those are, that's a pool of units that you can, that you can pull from to fill that gap between the 1,600, like I mentioned, and the 2,000. Transfer of development rights is something different. That is, those are development rights that exist on another property outside of the town center that can be transferred to a receiving property within the town center. So there is, it is true that properties can also use transfer of development rights to achieve additional density on their, on their property.
So it's fair to say we can go over 2,000? It's not an upper limit, actually? Is that a fair statement?
It's fair to say that you could, that you could achieve more than 2,000, but the, but the FEIS or the, when we studied the FEIS, it's that you would, when you approach that 2,000 unit limit, you would need to do additional environmental review or a supplement to the EIS.
And that is correct. So I want to say-
So I want to say two years ago, two and a half years ago, staff did, or there was a director's interpretation regarding allocated and maximum density. So our allocated density for town center is 1,646 units. Our affordable housing pool is 344. That's how you get to 2,000. Our code does say that you can use TDRs to get, to go from your allocated to your maximum, but once you hit 2,000 units, or even 1,999 units, if you're about to tip over to, over the 2,000, we do have to do environmental work. We also have to update the town center plan and the town center code. So it's a pretty hefty point with town center density once we hit 2,000 units. So you cannot exceed 2,000 units without that additional environmental work and updates to our town center plan and code.
Can I get just a little further clarification? Because you said we will have to do additional environmental work. Would it not be, it would, okay. That's, I want clarification, would be the applicant that would be doing that additional environmental impact statement? And just for the edification of council as well as the public, that's not really that high of a bar. I understand an EIS takes some time and some money, but maybe you can just kind of explain what that process looks like?
Exactly. It is an extensive process, and I don't mean to puff, but I am going to look to our ex-SEPA official over here, who can probably give you a better answer than I can on that.
So I've been through that a few times. An EIS is, again, remember, it's not a, it's not a permit approval. All it is, is a disclosure statement, and what it's intended to do is to contrast different potential options and try to identify what the different impacts might be with each of those alternatives. And at the end of the day, it's up to the decision makers, yourselves, to make up your minds about whether or not you want to allow a change like that to occur based on what you know as presented in the EIS. So what that would do is we would go through the EIS process. We would then bring you that information. We would bring the community along as part of that process. It includes open houses, scoping, it includes a draft EIS, comment collection, comment response, it includes probing of all of the different elements of the environment, air, earth, traffic, housing, historic resources, there's a long list under the SEPA rules. And then what that does is it allows you to consider impacts in each of the areas of the environment, and it allows you to make a decision based on what you know to be the potential impacts. And if the public benefit outweighs the potential impacts, then you might choose to proceed. But if the impacts outweigh the public benefit, then you might look to modify the proposal, reduce it, scope, to bring it down to a level where the level of impact is what would be considered as acceptable for the benefit that would be brought by the project.
Very good. Thank you. I think I just created a whole bunch more questions. I'm sorry. Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, I want to stay on this topic. When we talk about 2,000, you keep calling it a cap. It's a cap within the current EIS, correct?
That is correct. The current EIS, the final EIS, did study 2,000.
And then you have an affordable housing pool of 344. So if we use TDRs in addition to the 1,646, say 10, that means we can, we end up going, are we in, are they able to utilize all 344 still?
Yes, yes. And I believe there's 193 remaining out of the affordable housing pool.
So second, the minute that one TDR gets into the envelope, we're going over 2,000?
So actually, do you mind going back a slide? So the image on your left, the final environmental impact statement zoning town center, that shows graphic of the critical areas within town center. So those 646 units don't include environmental areas and their buffers. So you may have a parcel that is, say, 50% encumbered with buffer and critical areas. They can't count that area as part of that allocated density. So that's where TDRs can actually help fill that gap between getting to their allocated density. So town center density is the gross area of a parcel minus critical areas and buffers, and that's how you get to your allocated density. I hope that helps answer your question.
Okay. So if you had significant TDRs, you can exceed?
Yeah.
2,000?
No, you can't exceed. Once we get to 2,000, we have to do that additional environmental work.
Granted, yes, of course. Okay. So I just, that next slide just seemed a little confusing, the way it was phrased, that the 2,000, it was all inclusive of TDRs and affordable housing.
No, it, again, it depends on the development proposal and in calculation between gross and net density. And if you have a parcel, again, that's encumbered, you're not going to get as much density as the full amount, so you would make up that gap with either the affordable housing pool. Once that's extinguished and done, your next option are TDRs. But again, however you get to it, once we hit 2,000, we get to stop and take a pause and do some additional environmental work. The developer will get to do that additional environmental work, and we can reconsider what that cap looks like and if it needs to be adjusted at that time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stewart?
And just because we already decided we're the slow end of the table tonight, so there's a, there's a 2,000 cap that once it's reached, however you get there, whether you get there by affordable housing or TDRs, when you get to 2,000, the developer would have to do an additional environmental study and we would have to modify the town center plan. Because even if they do that study and the study says there are no impacts, I'm making that up, but even if they came back and said there'd be no environmental impact, they still could not proceed unless we modified the town center plan to raise that limit. Is that correct?
So yeah, you do, and I'm going to have David interrupt me, but you do, we get to that point where they do an environmental impacts statement, they take a look at that, and there's an alternative selected, say, to make, you know, that 2,500 has been studied and there's no major impact. Then, and you, and this goes then to the comp plan amendment process, which we know is a whole year, and then we get to update the code to reflect that, so our comp plan and our code aren't conflicting. So this is not something that's going to happen in a year. It's probably going to take a lot longer than that, and I can keep doing the cross eyedrope.
So we, back, I think in 2017, we anticipated this question would come up in the future. We ourselves were asking this question, given that many of us were newer to town center and its plan and the code. And the good thing about having a whole new set of eyes on something is it identifies sort of what, what did the previous generation of staff leave sort of unfinished, or what questions remain? So we, if you could pass me the director's interpretation, we actually went through the process of preparing and issuing formally a code interpretation that's appealable, and this lays out clearly what our formerly adopted stances on the 2,000 unit cap and what steps would have to be taken in order to exceed that cap. So although you could, in theory, based on the zoning, exceed the cap, if you were strictly just applying the zoning on a parcel-by-parcel basis, we're looking at this as a subarea, and we're considering the maximum number of units in the subarea based on what was considered in the EIS and what was considered in the town center plan itself. So if there were, if we were encroaching upon the cap, the 2,000 units, and we anticipated a project coming in the door that would push it over the limit, we would advise the applicant at that point that you are going to be responsible for going through an EIS process to raise the cap. We would work on scoping with them. Does that mean that they're going to only raise the cap to the minimum that their project requires, or would there be some additional units added in there? That would then, that process would run its course, and a final EIS would be issued. It would be brought back to you for your consideration, at which time we would amend the town center plan and the comprehensive plan. And when that is finalized and you've made your decision on that, that would then enable further applicants to come in the door, should the cap be lifted. Should you choose to not lift the cap, then no further applications would be enabled. Now, remember, there are two caps we're talking about, the density, the residential density as well as the commercial square footage. So just because someone is bumping into the cap for residential does not mean that if we do not have a full buildout of commercial, that they couldn't build commercial on the property, if the zoning allowed it.
So, so just to recap, so there is, in fact, to go to the next slide, there is a 2,000 unit cap, and that is inclusive right now of both affordable housing pool and TDRs, and that to raise that cap, as you've covered, is a multi-step process that would be a multi-year process as well. And that we have built or permitted 336 of those 2,000 units already in the town center. So we only have 1,664 left to go.
Correct. Did you say 326?
I thought you said.
336, so 16%.
Right. And I think 326 are built. I don't know where that other 10 came from, but last I checked, it was 326 have been built already.
Yeah, and that's throughout all.
Throughout all of them, yes.
The three projects that are currently built.
Okay. Thank you.
I will like to clarify another point and point it out to you. So the EIS studied 400,000 square feet of commercial space. What was adopted in the plan and in the code was 600. So I don't have an answer to why that was, but again, when we watch the applications coming in, when we're getting up to that 400,000, that's an initiation of looking at the environmental work for the commercial space. It is an inconsistency between the FEIS and the plan and the code. So I did want to bring that to your attention because we've mentioned the 400,000, and this is 600,000, so there you go.
Councilmember Hornish?
Kind of along that same line, the FEIS, Final Environmental Impact Statement, chose a preferred alternative, but there were other alternatives in that FEIS. If somebody were to come in with an application and say, "Well, you've already done it," would they have a valid claim to say the EIS has already been done for, I don't know, was it 4,000 units in the FEIS? Could, could, would they have a valid claim to say, "You got to use that one," and it says it's okay?
What we would do in that scenario is they would incorporate by reference the prior EIS. We would then require a supplemental EIS be done or a new EIS, depending on the scope of what they're proposing. They could always say, "Yes, that's been covered in the past." However, under the SEPA rules, when there's a change in the environment, you're always required to assess again anew the potential environmental impact. So what we would be saying here is that if you're proposing to do something outside of what was formerly adopted as the option chosen at the time by the decision makers, and there was some analysis done regarding another alternative in the EIS, that we would require them to process it anew because of potential changes in the environment. Now, that doesn't mean that it would require a full scope EIS. It might require a supplemental EIS. It could, at a minimum, require an expanded, what's called an expanded checklist, which is when somebody targets certain elements of the environment which might have changed. So for example, say, a new road was built, like 4th. That's a major change. So that, that would need to be factored into the transportation, the water quality, all the, you know, the stormwater that goes along with that, the sewer capacity. So there are multiple environmental factors already that have changed in town centers since the EIS was done, and we would be looking to a third party to help us with the EIS process to get through that and to iron out exactly what scope of environmental review would need to be done. Under SEPA rules, there are different levels of environmental review that can be done at different phases. It really depends on how much the environment's changed, how out, how out of scope what you're doing from the last EIS is, if that makes sense. So what, what we're trying to do is to stay the course as much as we can to what was adopted, and if you want to steer out of that course, then you're going to have to analyze and consider what impacts might occur. And again, it's not a decision, it's merely a disclosure statement, and we're trying to understand what impacts a change in policy, a change in code, a different type of project might bring about.
Okay, I think that helps me a little bit. I'm glad you used the example that if there, I think you said that if there's a new road that's been built, that's a change in environment. What if the assumptions in the original preferred alternative assumed certain roads to be built out, and they've not been built out? How does that impact the validity of the EIS that we're currently using?
And that's one of the reasons why, when we get to the rezone phase, which is the next phase of this, should, should we get there, that a limited scope transportation impact analysis would be required, is in order to true up what were the assumptions when past EIS was done with the current proposal today in front of us, and what changes to the environment we may have experienced. Or not experienced.
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moran?
I have a question, I'm not sure who it's going to go to, but I keep reading this stuff, and it goes to site-specific. So I'm hoping somebody can explain to me why this would not be considered spot zoning.
I can take a crack at that if this is on, no, that's on now. So Sammamish is fairly unique in its assembly of comprehensive plan land use map and its relationship to the zoning map. Most cities have a range of potential options under one land use designation. So say, for example, community business, most cities will have three or four different zones that would be acceptable under a community business land use designation. In Sammamish, we're, we're unique in that our land use map directly mimics our zoning map, and we don't have a range of options under different land use categories. So you, you could argue that the land use map is, in essence, the zoning map because there are no alternatives. I think we have one or two discrepancies in our map. One of them is down where the, the Central Washington University campus is, and that's under discussion for docketing for a potential zone change there, because it is inconsistent with the land use map. So this is not considered to be a spot zone because what you would be doing is putting in place the changes to the community's plan and vision prior to then coming in and rezoning it. The problem is, is that we don't have that variation in zone classifications that other cities do, which allow for more diversity on the ground and types of uses that you might see.
What would prevent anybody else in that E-zone from coming in and going, "Just a minute, you, you did this, so, you know, aren't we setting a precedence then?"
So if you recall, when this was brought up during the docket process, there were a few different options presented. Two, two of the specific options were to do an area-wide rezone of the entire E-zone, or, excuse me, E, I guess, land use area for the map, or to proceed with the individual request as received from the property owner. The council at the time chose to proceed with the individual. There are just two different ways of doing it. So you're right that it does, to some degree, set a precedent, although it depends on what your approach is, but if you're taking the, what is known as the wedding cake approach, which is, you know, the higher intense density is more in the middle of the area, and the fringe areas step down, it's common to most cities, and Bellevue is a good example of that, where they've tried to diminish the intensity of the zone around the adjacent residential in order to allow people to still live in their residential homes while having a commercial core. In this case, you, you could still achieve that, depending on what you chose for this property. If you went with what the applicant was proposing and you went with the A, well, then you would have the opportunity to choose something lesser to the south or to the southeast of that location.
I don't see any more questions up here right now. Do you have more to go through?
Just a minute. Kelly and David covered the, the end of my presentation pretty well. So, but I will say that just within the scope of what we were looking at and how we were assisting with this, specifically just looking at the map change, the comprehensive plan feature land use map change to TCA, and the kind of the threshold we were looking at is that, does that, does that create a significant enough change to warrant supplemental EIS or additional environmental analysis? And so we looked at that in two ways, so that's why we wanted to show this first compared to the development capacity and just show that both within the southeast quadrant and within the total town center, you're well within those, those assumptions that the FEIS was. the FEIS made for the 2,000 units at this time. That might be due to critical areas or other factors that are limiting development. It's going slower than what was anticipated in the town center plan. And then, second, with the director's interpretation that David mentioned, it talked about zoning capacity and how that's a little different from a development cap. And it says that zoning capacity alone is not sufficient to require additional environmental analysis, is what the interpretation says. So that's actually exemplified, like Kelly said, in the commercial space, where you have a town center that allocates 400,000 square feet of commercial space, but then you have a code that enables up to 600,000 square feet of commercial space. But then in the real world, you also have—you don't have nearly that much built to date. So it's kind of when you start to approach that threshold for both either the commercial space or for the residential units that you would actually require the additional environmental analysis. So in summary, that's why we found that the TCA—which is the proposal—the TCA land use map change—is consistent with what's in the Final Environmental Impact Statement. But we'll also say that further critical review of the project will take place through this process, through the rezone and the recommended limited scope traffic analysis, and then as well as project-level mitigation. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm just going to finish up with a couple slides here. So one is going over the options for consideration tonight. On screen, you'll see the four options. The first is granting provisional approval of the application as submitted by the applicant with the designation of TCA. The second option follows the recommendation of Planning Commission with a provisional approval of TCB. The third option is to grant provisional approval with a designation of TCC. And this would be the one remaining zoning designation option for town center beyond the civic campus designation, which obviously is not applicable here. And then the final option would be to deny the application, which would leave the parcel as TCE. So again, going back to our earlier conversation, you'll notice that the language is—for the first three options—granting provisional approval. And this is because the Growth Management Act requires the proposed amendments to be considered together to look at the cumulative effects that they might have, and also because the GMA requires that updates, proposed amendments, and revisions to the comprehensive plan be considered no more frequently than once a year, with some exceptions. So if you do choose to change the zoning designation on the future land use map for this parcel, you do so tonight by passing a motion to grant provisional approval, and then the final approval would occur by the city council as part of that consolidated ordinance with all of the other proposed amendments, which is slated for early 2020. And before I conclude, I just wanted to again highlight the review criteria for Title 24 for your consideration, and I'll be handing things over to the applicants themselves before the opportunity to ask more questions. So I'm going to hand things over now to Frank and Maureen Santoni.
We actually still have more questions up here.
Okay.
Real quick. Councilmember Hornish?
I just want to ask two questions to kind of drill the point home that I think I understand. And I think we just kind of beat a dead horse to get it straightened out. 2,000 units in the town center sub-area plan, all four quadrants, is the maximum we can have under the EIS. It's also the maximum we can have under the code right now.
Correct.
If we don't upzone this property or change the land use map, how many units can be allowed in the town center zone?
Well, right now, if you just go by the allocated zoning in the town center zone, what they can build by right, by acreage, you could build 1,656 units, and then you could use the affordable housing pool to build more.
Up to?
Up to 2,000. And then we also discuss the potential for transfer development rights as well for an individual project.
And I appreciate what you just said, that the zoning allows 1,600 and some odd.
Yes.
Plus the extra—
Plus incentives.
The bonuses.
To get to 2,000.
To 2,000.
And that's just assuming that, based on raw acreage of each parcel, if they were able to develop at that density.
Based on the zoning. So if you—if this land use map is rezoned, the 1,638 goes up, but it reduces the number of bonus—the difference between the 1,638 and 2,000. Is that correct? Because you can still only build 2,000, I think, is what we just determined.
So if I could step in here for a second. So this is something we've talked about internally, and really, it's all about geographic distribution of units. So what's important here is it's all about sequential order of receipt of applications. So should an applicant be eligible? Should it meet all the application requirements to come in the door? It's the first ones that actually get approval to be built that actually are then counted in our tally of number of units. So what happens then is you might, for example, have a property that, say, the standard-based zone allows, say, 300 units. But then you're able to achieve more than that because you can use the affordable housing pool, as long as it's available, or you could use TDRs, as long as they're available. And you could actually increase the number, based on what the code allows, to a higher number. Now, what happens if you get close to the 2,000 cap is that might actually downzone somebody else's property, so to speak, by artificially limiting the number that they could have, even below what the zoning would allow, because you're hitting the cap. They would have to go through the environmental review process, the town center plan reconsideration by the legislative body, in order to then bring their property back up to what the base zone would allow. So really, what happens here is it's really sequential, and it matters who comes in the door first.
But I guess the point I'm trying to drive home, that's up to the developers to choose when and if they apply, and first come, first serve. But from a policy point of view, it's 2,000 max today, and if we decide to change the land use map tomorrow, it's 2,000 units max.
That's correct.
That's what I wanted to understand. Thank you.
I do have one additional question, and I appreciate that Councilmember Hornish kind of—you know, if you think of them as jelly beans, you're just pushing them around the town center map. It doesn't matter where you put them. There's just 2,000 jelly beans. That's it. But I do have a question relative to the southeast quadrant and some assumptions from policies and goals that are in our town center plan relative to the southeast quadrant specifically, and that has to do with Crusader Way. The assumption in here is that Crusader Way will be converted from a private road into a public one, and that there would be a connector from Crusader Way around the back of where the Santonies parcel is, where the existing Ichijo development is, and would connect to Southeast 8th Street. And it looks like on page 40 of our town center plan that that was one swath that was supposed to be done with Southeast 4th was clearly not done. My question for staff is, why not? And have we had conversations with Eastside Catholic? Is it a reality to assume that that road will be converted to a public one? And I also note in our map another connecting road, which will never exist because Ichijo is sitting there, and there is a road on our map that looks like it goes right through there. So my concern in reading this is that—on page 44, where it says, "We are going to convert Eastside Catholic's access road to a public street," it says, "While this road was originally intended to be access for Eastside Catholic High School, it will become the primary access point to the developments in the northeast and southeast quadrants." And my concern is because it talks about to facilitate a substantial amount of vehicular, bicycle, pedestrian, and bus traffic. If anyone drives on 228th right now, they know that the school buses are stopping right in front of Ichijo and causing a traffic backup. And if we have another bus stop right in front of, you know, the Santonies parcel, where we don't have that connecting road, which is where we said we wanted all that to be, my question is, is that ever going to be a reality? Conversion of that road to public? Because I think it makes a big difference in how we view these parcels and changing their zoning, as to whether or not we're going to be able to accomplish that.
So that right there is largely one of the major components of—or the purpose of—a transportation master plan. And a transportation master plan is a refinement of all of the different goals and policies in the comp plan and trying to put them down on a map, so to speak, and identify priorities, sequencing, how things are built out. So that is something that should be being considered as part of the transportation master plan process, as to whether that specific road would be built out, how it would be built out, who would be responsible for that, whether it would be a developer, whether it would be the city. So typically, what we would do is, because we don't have a transportation master plan here, it makes it challenging for staff to achieve that vision because we don't have a specific document that we depend on to understand road grid networks, how it all is laid out. So what we would be doing is we'd be relying on the State Environmental Policy Act process as part of the application to require, as a matter of condition of approval, that the project at least be designed to be forward-compatible with the future road, so that that right-of-way would be set aside for future connections. So, you know, these are things that we are looking to try to preserve that potential future connectivity in the city, although we don't have a transportation master plan to help guide us to that outcome. So what we would be doing is going into a recommendation to a hearing examiner that a condition be added to a project—if it was a Type III—to require that that area be set aside as part of a project, or even built with a partial right-of-way, so that it's forward-compatible with any future road deployment. If it was a larger development, and say it was either one property owner, or say there were multiple property owners that came together in a partnership, then that is something, if it was proposed for development altogether, could be built at one time. So that's one of the benefits of a larger development, although there are other impacts that go along with that. So because it is in the comprehensive plan, and because it is shown clearly on a map, and because it is talked about clearly as being the main point of access for many of the developments that would be easterly facing, to try to get the collector traffic off of the main arterial, as you suggested, that would be something we would include as part of the SEPA analysis and the SEPA mitigative measures and conditions as part of the development review process.
So, okay. So from a legislative standpoint, then, how do—I mean, aside from having a transportation master plan—I mean, we have a plan here, right, that says there's supposed to be a road there. There's also the plan that says there's supposed to be a road going right through where Ichijo is, and that wasn't done as part of that application process. So from a policymaker's standpoint, how do we make sure that that is a requirement going forward if it wasn't done for Ichijo? It wasn't a requirement for that one, otherwise there would be a road in the middle of it. But there's not, and there's not a set aside for right-of-way.
So I may be wrong, and I don't have a blueprint of all the projects in the city embedded in my head, unfortunately. I'd love that if that was the case. Maybe not. But I do recall that there was, as part of the Ichijo project, a requirement that the back section of that project be built to be forward-compatible with a future Crusader Way extension to the south. So I'd have to check the plan set, but I do recall that there was a component to that, although, again, it's not embedded in my head.
Sure. No. Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to echo what David said. I don't have the site plan memorized, but I do know that the Ichijo development did pay a SEPA mitigation fee for that future connector road, for what they would have been responsible for paying if that was in place, or there were—they had to be responsible for building it. Plateau 120, or as we know it today, Sammamish Apartments, also paid a mitigation fee for the northeast connector road. So those funds are with the city, and we're holding them until future plans to build those roads are in place.
Okay. All right. I don't see any more questions now. Did you want to have the Santonies present at this point? Okay.
I'm Frank Santoni at 22828 Southeast 6th Place, Sammamish. And good evening. So we're going to tell you our story. To begin with, Maureen and I are not developers, nor are we working with a developer. We're just a retired couple doing this on our own and trying to get on with our lives. We've been working on this now for over three years and are finally getting there. We never thought this process would have taken so long, but the building moratorium put us on hold, as you heard, for a year. And the city had never done a rezone in the town center, and they were developing the process as we went along. Several times, they apologized and asked for our patience as the process changed on the way. I'd like to talk a little bit more about the TCE zone. TC-Zone E is a reserved zone granted to five landowners, and the Sammamish Hills Lutheran Church, reserved meaning preserving the opportunity for future development. The purpose for the Zone E was established by the city council in 2008. After recommendations from the Planning Commission at the time, it became part of the municipal code. And I'm trying to get this to work. Good luck. Next slide. Your clicker doesn't work.
No, it doesn't.
Technical difficulties.
Frank, I'm going to open it up on the laptop here, and I can advance for you.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and do that? So I'm going to keep reading, but it became part of the municipal code. And we'll get the next slide up. That just shows the municipal code where it was found. The city wanted our property to be at higher zoning, and in a compromised move, decided that to create the TCE zone with the understanding that it would be actualized to the higher desired densities when the residents were ready. There's a comment in the packet by a former planning commissioner at the time, which describes the intent of the TCE zone and the promise made to the holders of this zoning. The question has come up, why TCA? Why do we request TCA? We actually consulted with the city's staff analysts at the time we were applying to get on the docket in 2017 as to what would be appropriate to ask for. We were told it would be reasonable to ask for the same zoning as the Ichijo development to the north. After all, it's right on 228th Avenue with other TCA zones to the north and across the street. And the church property to the south has a substantial tree buffer already on its property. We are also involved in the town center development from the start, and had—we had not asked for—to be given consideration to stay in our house, we would have been zoned TCA. This is just a sliver of the whole town center, 2.3 acres out of 240, and although it might seem obvious that a rezone of this property would have little impact, the city had AHBL do an independent environmental review and also ask us to have a traffic impact study completed. Can you go on to the next slide? And in that study, AHBL said, "It is our analysis that the proposed Santoni Comprehensive Plan Amendment and zoning reclassification are not likely to have significant adverse environmental impacts." We've talked about this a lot tonight, but there has been a misconception that this will add residential units to the 2,000 units covered in the FEIS, but it does not. It just redistributes them a small amount. Can I get the next slide, please? From the Sammamish Community Development Director's interpretation on May 2, 2017, that David Pyle already talked about, the town center plan adopted in June of 2008 likewise established an upper limit for the development of the town center of 2,000 dwelling units. There only have been 75 units developed in the quadrant so far, in the southeast quadrant. We talked to several councilmembers, and they have been concerned about the Buildable Lands report that's coming due. We talked to the King County Focal about this, and she said it's up to Sammamish when to report any changes in zoning. It could come after zoning was officially complete, which is three to six months from now. She said it's also not a significant change in density compared to the 60,000 or so residents in Sammamish, and should have little impact on capacity planning in January or growth target discussions in the spring. The town center is capped at 2,000 units anyhow, and it may have absolutely no impact. If you look at the timeline, any real structures will not be present until probably 2024 at the earliest due to timeline for permits and design approvals. There's also been concern about a letter from the Lake Washington School District, but an email from Brian Buck of the school district—and I'll have the next slide, please—stated, "As noted in our comment letter, we are not opposing this specific rezone application, but rather providing input regarding the school's infrastructure needs, so these matters are considered in land use planning." As I said before, we are not developers with deep pockets, and you might be interested in what this has meant to us financially. Based on our latest King County assessment, our overall property value has gone down. It's just underutilized as a single house on a large lot in the town center. We paid the city over $11,000 over the past two years to cover application fees, pre-app meetings, studies which they commissioned to be done. We also paid for the city's lawyers to be present at our application— We also paid for the city's lawyers to be present and with, at our application meetings. On top of that, we've had to engage our own lawyer and to get us through the maze of this process and are approaching $40,000 total cost for what we thought was just gonna be a paperwork exercise. We need to be able to sell our current property at a fair value to pay for our new house. And we were told we were getting 10 minutes total.
We're splitting. I'm sorry.
We are splitting. So Maureen's gonna talk for the next five minutes.
Okay.
That timer was for Maureen's benefit.
Do I need to tell you for the pictures, or does this thing work?
Doesn't work.
Doesn't work. Okay. Thank you for being here. We know it is the eve of elections, and this has been thrown about like a political football. We hope that politics will stay out of tonight's decision. This is our house. We've lived in it for 38 and a half years. We moved to the Samamish Plateau 40 years ago, and we lived at Pine Lake Heights for two years while we designed this house and had it built. We moved in in July of 1981. For all the years before the Ichijou development came, it was quiet and private. The house sits back about an acre, and not a lot of people knew we were there. Our children grew up in the house. Frank had a job at Boeing he loved. He was also a volunteer track coach. We are founding members of our church. I was a substitute teacher for 25 years with the Issaquah School District. I was certified in both primary and secondary. I went everywhere from Liberty High School in the south to Echo Glen Juvenile Detention Center in the east and to all the schools here on the south end of Samamish. I spent a lot of time at Skyline. They knew I was close and could come quickly. I walked to work and could come home for lunch. The teachers were amazed by that, and many had come from so far because there really isn't housing they can afford in Samamish. There's been a lot of changes in the years we have lived here. Six years ago, Intercor met with us and told us of their plans for the two parcels of land to the north of us. Later, Ichijou brought the project. We knew we'd been promised buffers and that we wanted to stay. One Saturday, Frank was away, and I saw the buffer edge come down. I held up my arms to stop a huge machine and was shown drawings of the drain approved that was to go right along the property line. It was the beginning of the end for us. Picture two. This is the view to the south now and the way it has always been. The Lutheran Church sits on the other side, their parking lot and their preschool. You can't see any of it. We had a similar view to the north until it all came down. During construction, all vegetation was removed, cedars, alders, maples, laurels. One day, we came home to find muddy footprints going up to our front door and back door and mud on the doorknobs. We called the police, and they tried to take fingerprints. They told us our house is so visible now, from before Met Market, you could see whether we were home or not. It was signs for our security system that stopped them then, but the police told us to be extra vigilant. We went to all the meetings years ago for developing the town center. Before one location was even decided, Bob Keller and John Rose were on our front porch talking about four smaller centers, building up around the existing Safeway and QFC areas and adding two similar places to the west. Once a single area was decided, we asked for 50-foot buffers to protect us, but we were given 20. Picture three. It turns out that there was no protection at all. The 20 feet was just the distance from the property line to the buildings. The property line is the fence. There are now eight-foot-by-10-foot cement patio slabs all the way down the buffers. The bushes and trees planted don't even come up to the fence. Picture four. This is a picture taken from our front porch. The townhomes are on three levels, bedrooms on tops, and living rooms and kitchens below. We see into these rooms, TVs on, people making dinner. One man without a shirt is always going to his refrigerator. One evening last week, I came home about 8:30, and every light in the 15 units that border our house were on. It was like the buildings were ablaze. Picture five. While under construction, we took this picture from inside one of the units. The view is not their backyard, but our house and everything we do, front door, back door, whether our cars are there, if there is a package at the front door. It is like living in a fishbowl. There are 15 units looking directly at us. We are their view. If we are out gardening or on our front porch, people are watching, or we hear whole conversations from their patios. Our sense of security is gone. The UPS driver is afraid to leave packages because we are now so visible to so many households. We love our house. We made the painful, difficult decision that we could no longer live with these surroundings. We tried to have the house moved, but it wasn't possible due to fiber optic power lines, so we got out the original plans, all frayed at the edges, and decided to rebuild. We found a lot about a mile away. It alone costs more than twice the original house and property. We found a wonderful builder from Samamish, even our project manager is from Samamish. We thought this part would be over last year, but with the building moratorium and continual delays, we are dealing with this now, and the rebuilt house is almost finished. This is not what we expected to be doing in retirement. We would like to get on with our lives. You know, for almost the first half-mile from the town center boundary at Southeast 8th to the SAM Apartments at First Street, along 228th on the east side, there are only three remaining single-family homes, ours and two rentals. On the west side, there are no single-family homes until you are out of the town center north boundary. If you drive down the streets within this area, there are many boarded-up houses, houses left to fall apart. Here are a few pictures. If you could just slowly go through six, seven, the next four pictures, please. There are also empty lots where the houses have already been torn down. We knew some of these families over the years. They were allowed to sell. From these pictures, it is obvious there was no attempt to save or rent these houses. The value was in the land. We would like to be able to do the same. There is no point in having a single-family home in a multifamily area. I am sure each of you will go home tonight to a house where you feel secure and a sense of privacy. We would like to have that again, too. Thank you again, and we hope you support our rezone application.
Thank you. So, guide me, you ran through that list. We've got the San Tonys. You want us to open the public hearing now?
Yeah, if there's any.
Can I add one point of clarification?
Sure.
While we were here, just for the last minute, I actually was able to pull up the Ichijou Binding Site Plan and take a quick look at that. And on the cover sheet of the Ichijou Binding Site Plan, it does identify that the project was subject to CIPA mitigation measures, like I suggested prior, that required them to make a payment, in-kind payment, instead of building out their portion of the road to build the connector road. It does appear, based on overlaying the Ichijou site with the town center map, that the, I guess, easterly edge of, or the westerly edge of the future connector road is actually to the east of the Ichijou site. So that road would just barely skirt the back end of the Ichijou site. There was also a voluntary agreement made by Ichijou as part of the development to extend the mitigation fee from five years to 15 years. So under state law, if we don't use a mitigation fee payment within five years, we're required to pay it back to them. But what they did as part of their binding site plan and part of the development agreement was to extend that to 15 years voluntarily. So that is consistent with what I had indicated, how we would treat other developments that might come in the door there.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So unless the council has any questions of the applicant or additional questions of staff, you're welcome to open the public hearing. Okay. I don't see any lights on, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. And I do have a list. First on the list, I have Mike Patterson.
My name is Mike Patterson. I live at 23018 Southeast 8th Street here in Samamish. I'm one of the, I guess, three other homes that are in the E-zone area along Southeast 8th Street, two houses down from the Lutheran Church. I've known the San Tonys for a long time, but, and I actually have worked with Frank, gosh, back in the late 80s. But it's amazing what you do, go out to the web and you do a search on someone's name, and I did search Frank Santoni. I recall back in 20, I think it was 17, 2011, there's an article in the paper, the Issaquah Press, that says, "Home is Where the Heart Is. Residents Fear Town Center Development Will Change Samamish for the Worst." It says Frank and Maureen Santoni have made a beautiful home for themselves. Their 30-year-old home, timber house, sits in a small clearing close to City Samamish, City Hall, and 228th Avenue, but sheltered from the noise of the street by tall Douglas fir, maple, and alder trees. It says Frank and Maureen have made a beautiful home for themselves. When I visited the San Tonys' home, waking up to the front, walking up to the front porch, even the smell of cedar burning in the woodstoles filled the air. When the strong winds split the dark clouds, there were stars, like many people who enjoy the peace and quiet that pockets Samamish offer. They are regularly visited by raccoons, deer, hawks, and eagles, the occasional unseen bobcat. It's a quality of life they have deliberately sought, a defining trait of what they value as residents. It's also one they fear is now threatened by the development of the proposed town center. San Tonys have watched as honest plans have changed and morphed, launched and been abandoned in the short history of the city. They took a keen interest in deliberations of the first planning advisory board, a volunteer group of residents charged with drafting Samamish's first comprehensive plan. Most weeks, you'll find them in the public area at the council or planning commission meetings. Well, you know, they said the tranquility of the place is what attracted them, and the city would be compromising the brightest assets if it came too concerned with commerce and condos. And 228th, there are in many ways at the heart of the storm. So we realize we're on a prime road up here. We've always knew it was going to be developed to some extent, but all we really want is that for the development to be appropriate. Under the Galvin Plan, which is another story, to increase density in the southeast quadrant to the north, we would have a four-story building right up against our property line. We'll jump ahead to 2019. They have a three, not a four-story, but they have a three-story Ichijou townhomes built right up to the property lines they've shown. So with a beautiful and obstructive view into their home and their daily lives. There's no city mandated buffer between the properties. That's been enforced. I believe there was supposed to be 50-foot property buffers. I think the cities failed to enforce that. If they want to move, I'd be, I wonder if they, no wonder they want to move. I'd be willing to bet that all of you in the city council wouldn't want to stay there either now. So now they feel compelled to move and sell their property. I moved into our home 16 years ago, and I look at our future, what's going to happen. The city wanted all of our property at one time badly.
I do need you to wrap up here, please.
I got two more sentences.
Sure.
Wanted ours badly. We got the agreement to allow us to stay for a while, and here we are now trying to sell and upzone, and we have to go through all this. I wonder what I'm gonna have to do when I get to that point if I'm going to sell. If I have to do it through that $40,000 from my retirement fund, do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ellie Bump, followed by Stan Adams and Karen Herring.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Bump, and I live at 100 Timber Ridge Way Northwest, Issaquah, Washington. My husband and I were residents of Samamish for 20 years, from 1991 to 2011, at which time my husband was diagnosed with a terminal illness, and we had to sell our home. But like the San Tonys, we never intended to ever leave Samamish. It was a slice of heaven, and we loved it. When the city announced that they were going to take 250 acres around the city hall for city center, of course, we landowners were highly upset, and my husband was kind of the driving force between getting the residents together, and we would, we would meet periodically and try and decide what could we do to stay in our homes. And we came up with the E-zone, and it went before the planning commission, the city council, and was all approved. And I think I can safely say my husband is probably turning over in his grave at all that the San Tonys have had to go through. The heartache of leaving a home that you love, the headache of dealing with city government and lawyers, and the horrific expense. And I think it says volumes about the San Tonys, as well as the city of Samamish, that they're not leaving. They're staying in Samamish. And I just would ask you, urge you to approve their request. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan Adams, followed by Karen Herring.
My name is Stan Adams. I live at 3211263 Court Southeast here in Samamish. I'm here representing the Samamish Hills Lutheran Church at 22818 Southeast 8th. That's directly cornered across, it's been referred to as the Lutheran Church. We are directly south of the San Tonys' property. While we're not partnering with them in any way and not part of their plan, I'm here to tell you that we have considered it at the council level, and we have no objection to their doing, to their proposal, and it's being passed as proposed. That's it.
Thank you. Karen Herring, followed by William Bressley.
I would like just to ask that the San Tony property do get the upzone they're asking for. I couldn't even imagine living in their house right now. At the planning commission on September 19th, there were a bucket of people up there asking for this to happen because they see the problem, too. I wanted to ditto Scott Hamilton, Mary Victor, Kent Train, myself, and say that the public comments all supported it, and I think that y'all should, too, because imagine coming out of that house, trying to go have your coffee, and looking at the guy with no shirt on looking at you. We don't want to have that happen to this couple. They want to stay here, and I want to walk to their new property because it's gonna be in my neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm William Bressley. I live at 22923 Northeast 20th Place. Been here 30 years. Our family's grown up here. Frank's been, Frank and Maureen have been here even longer. I've worked with Frank for over 20 years. I'm just gonna read to what I had sent to the council. I do support the San Tonys' request to rezone from the TCE to the TCA, but I disagree with the rezoning process that they had to go through. I came to this conclusion after talking at length with Frank and also taking a look at the town center plans that are on the city's website. The city's intent seems clear, that all properties in town center, other than the civic land, would be TCA, B, or C. On page 10 of the town center plan on the Samamish website, the preferred alternative shows a land on Southeast 6th, including the San Tonys' property, as low-intensity townhouses, which would relate to the TCA, B, or C. The town center property immediately north is TCA 3, Ichijou, as everybody's talked about, and to the west, TCB. Reszoning to TCA would make most sense for the San Tony property. That'd give the city the most flexibility for its future development, since the San Tonys' property's long edge butts right up against the TCA townhouses to the north, with little buffer, as they've mentioned, between them. Also, from the Samamish Municipal Code, the purpose of the reserved TCE zone is to allow the current residents to remain while preserving the opportunity for future development. Now, I'm sure the intent was that the future development was for the city, not the owner itself. The San Tonys were under the impression that they, when they were ready to move, the property would be rezoned to fit into the town center plan to benefit the city. The reason they were asked, they're asking for the TCA comes from a recommendation, as Frank had mentioned in talking with the city staff. Referencing the city zoning map dated April 12, 2016, from the city's website, it shows that there are only a few TCE properties, and at my guess, you know, about 5% to 7% of the total town center property. Wasn't it the initial intent to eventually drive all that TCA to A, B, or C anyway? The prime, you know, it's a prime property in the central location of town center, great benefit to the city. And skip that little part here, running out of time. And my disagreement, you know, when the San Tonys were zoned to a TCE as the town center plan was being implemented, they were never told that they'd have to go through this process and pay for the studies and paperwork to get rezoned simply to fit into the town center plan. You know, why the San Tonys had to do all that paperwork, pay the fees for the rezoning based on the town center plan, it seems it was the city's intent to eventually rezon it anyway. Now, from the rezoning map dated, excuse me, from the zoning map dated 2016, all the TCE property, just a couple more sentences, it was roughly 5% to 7%. Didn't the initial town center plan consider that minor 5% to 7% in their initial studies? And I see the latest EIS that was shown showed that as B anyway, so why are they paying for more studies? It's just very confusing as to why they have to, and in particular because their 2.4 acres is 1% of the total town center. Why is all this being done? To me, it seems like a waste of the city's money in going through this process, as well as a waste of their money, and... And personal opinion, I think they should be reimbursed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Patrick Arneson. And then I think from the previous public comic signing sheet, we have Donovan Albrecht.
I'm at 23102 Southeast 8. That's just up the street and around the corner from the San Tony lot. I also want to throw my support behind the San Tony and the application, the San Tonys' and their application, for basically ethical reasons. What was, what happened there, they're not trying to leave, they're not trying to necessarily profit from what, from redevelopment here. What happened was the city began growing up around them and the situation was done to them. It's not something they did on their own. They, they were there decades before the city center plan came along and the rest of it. And then to, can you, just, just imagine what it'd be like to have your whole buffer of trees completely stripped away and dense townhouses put up around your family home, the home that you were planning to grow old in and retire in. So again, this was done to them by the city. And in that sense, I think the city owes them a form of remedy. And it seems pretty clear that allowing this zone to go through, allowing them to sell the property, use the revenue from that to pay for the new house that they've built here in Samamish, and to move and settle in to the retirement they had been planning, is a very straightforward remedy, which was completely in line with the original city plan in the first place. So once again, I'm definitely behind the San Tony application, and I think the city should be too. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Donovan Albrecht here.
Well, I think everybody's told everything about San Tonys. Frank and Marie, they love Samamish. That's why their, their new house is about a mile from their old house. They aren't going to Sacramento or someplace like that. And I think they should be rezoned. As one individual just mentioned, it's only 1% of the entire system. So it's going to be a large city someday. And I think everybody's said about everything they can say about it, but I think it should be rezoned. And as far as the roads, there should be no problem. It's east side Catholic, Southeast 8 Street, and the existing roads that they already Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, I ask you to vote for rezone for San Tonys. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Yes, if, if there are folks that want to address this, just go ahead and queue up and step up to the microphone.
Thank you. My name is Randy Neville. I live at 2206-275 Court Southeast. I didn't think I would make it here tonight, so I had submitted a letter to you previously. So I'll just reinforce a few of the key points that I wanted to make in that. I do fully support the San Tonys and their request for rezoning. You know, they're longtime residents of Samamish. They're going to continue to be longtime residents of Samamish. So I, I think that process, the council needs to help them move forward with that process. Their home is losing value on a daily basis, as this building is 20 feet away from their property. You know, there really is no buffer, like they had been promised there would be. Outdoor living spaces with patios and things is not a buffer. So their quality of life has gone down, and the property is losing value on a daily basis. So I realize that probably the, the timing of their request, I hate that they're, that they could potentially be held responsible for, for current concerns about development or non-development. I think this is more, is not a matter of development and whether it should be rezoned to a different category, but whether the, the council should support letting them move on and move on with their life. There's really no way that they can, they can sell that property as very valuable residential property right now. So allow them to, to move still within Samamish and can, and to continue their life there. If, one thing that concerns me is that if you were not to rezone the property right now, there's very much the potential that a developer could come in and speculate, buy the property at its deflated value, and then with their deep pockets could at some point in the future turn it into a commercial development. And the problem with that is that now the developer would reap the benefits at the expense of a local resident that is really being impacted by other developmental decisions. I mean, having the high-density housing next door and surrounding their property. So it would make sense, not from a development issue, just from courtesy and respect for, for residents, to allow them to, to move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marcia Shire, and I live at 2202-212th Avenue Southeast. And this is a comment really about development and traffic. And I really think in terms of development, I'm not necessarily against it, as long as we're talking about good planning. But I think when you're talking about good planning, putting roads on maps that don't exist is not a sign of good planning. It's, it's a sign of sort of pie-in-the-sky planning. And, and when you're talking about things like that, then you have to really think about what you're doing and think hard, because, because that's not a sign of what's really going on. And then you're going to come into situations where traffic is impacted and lives are at stake. And so that causes a lot of concern with me. And I think you have to think twice then about voting for a situation like that, because it's a very serious and complex situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not live directly over the fence from the San Tonys, but I do have a big fridge. 196 Avenue Northeast. I wasn't going to get up tonight. I should have been like a kid in the candy store. I think I would have had 18 minutes of public comment, but Mary's not here either, so I think that's like a full 40 minutes. We'll get out early tonight, right? So, but my son, my 12-year-old son, he really likes World War II history. And tagging along in museums with him, one of the things I learned was 1942, Roosevelt, all his top war generals and advisors said, hey, we need to liberate France. We need to cross the English Channel and get this done with. Britain said no, USSR said yes. Roosevelt ignored all his generals and top war planners and says, no, we're, we're not battle-tested. So they went to North Africa. And in North Africa, they had amphibious landing and they lost a lot of their boats and realized that they weren't even close to being ready. And it took a full two more years of manufacturing wartime production to the point where they were ready to invade in Normandy. And it was a huge lesson learned. And I think where's Samamish ultimately? Where are we going? You know, there's two, two camps here in, in town. One of them, you know, says, oh, town center, we're going to concentrate on the growth. But then the other camp says, no, 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 you're not, because there's no TDR program. And they have a point. But ultimately, as we move forward with the state plan and with receiving our growth allocations, we're going to have to concentrate density. So how are we going to do that? Well, there's TDR program. TDR program that was made mention 25 years ago in the East Basin Plan, where we took R4 zoning, net zoning, and took it to basically R0, R0.1. And to this day, that TDR program has never, ever been instituted. So not only do we need to institute the program, but we're going to need to make it robust. I mean, there's going to be, have to be so much evolution within that TDR program to concentrate densities in certain areas and not have urban sprawl in neighborhoods and all these RUEs. Well, how are we going to do that when the TDR program's not even available? You know, where is our North Africa, where we at least have a chance to go start and get going and get started? So, you know, if you don't give them A and you're considering B, why not give them NA for North Africa? That is the difference between B and A. If you want to go from B to A, we open up the Samamish TDR program for only TDRs where residents of Samamish have been waited 25 years to transfer over. We say, you can go to A, as long as it's all Samamish TDRs. And then if you want to take it above A using more TDRs and more low-income housing credits, great, go for it. But somehow, we got to quit fighting amongst ourselves and not having any momentum whatsoever and get to the next step where the future's going. So we need to open up these TDRs, and this would be a great way to do it somehow, whether it be an ordinance or giving them B zones, saying you go to A zone or give them A zone.
I do need you to wrap up, Mr. Eastman.
But I have five other public comments I did not sign up for, but.
And I so appreciate that.
It's a great, great, great opportunity to get started and get this, get things figured out and get going. Thanks.
There's still time for the other three public hearings, though, yeah. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, so I will ask the council before I close the public hearing if you want me to close the public hearing or extend the public hearing. And we have lights popping on. Councilmember Hornish.
I was, I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
But I'll wait to see.
I've got several other lights on.
I just need to know whether I need to close the hearing.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, I'll wait for him to make a motion, but.
Okay. I need to know whether you want me to close.
Close it.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay. Deputy Mayor Moran, your light's still on.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Hornish.
Okay. Can you put those options back up for us to choose, 1, 2, 3, and 4?
It's going to take me one minute.
Oh, I know what, I know which one it is. I move that we adopt option 2, which would be a rezoning of the San Tony property to TCB, or, or the land use map alteration. Sorry.
And I would second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, so now we're open for discussion. Councilmember Hornish, did you want to speak to your motion?
I, I do. I am supportive of a TCB for many reasons. Number one, as I made a point, it does not increase the density inside the town center zone, it just reallocates it. It was, it was planned by the FEIS, I pulled that out, and I think people made reference to it. It shows on the EIS, which is not the comp plan, to be clear, as a B. So it was contemplated, contemplated to be a B all along in the planning process, in my opinion, based on the FEIS. I think if we don't rezone it, it would be inconsistent with the TCA to the north to go from TCA and jump all the way to R1. So I think it needs to be something to where we have that wedding tier cake to come down. And I think from A to a B, and there's only one more parcel, the Lutheran Church down to Southeast 8. So I don't know, that's not up for discussion right now as to what that should be, but I think we've got that wedding tier by going to a B for the San Tonys. I think their circumstances have changed. The high density to development has encroached on this parcel that was not planned when the TCE, handshake deal is what I'm going to call it, that it was an understood that you would not be taxed out of the property by having it E now with an upzone at some point. And it was a B, I think, contemplated all along, in my opinion. The issues about the roads I have a concern about, but I think those, the concurrency, the roads and everything else will be addressed at the time if and when somebody buys it and a development, development permit is then applied for. And that's when we can be addressing those issues, our staff will be addressing those issues. I don't think the question on the table for, for land use map alteration should be considering all those factors. There's too many unknowns at this point, but for a rezoning which doesn't increase density, doesn't increase the number of dwelling units inside our allocated plan that we can accept from King County, I think TCB is appropriate because of the wedding tier. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, first of all, I'm Mrs. Bump, and she's right. Her husband Stan was with us the whole time and was usually sitting right there and usually telling us what to do. And he was a lovely man who, who, yes, he was very direct. Anyway, so that area, from what I recall, it was an E. It was scheduled to be a B. The reason that we looked at it for being a B was because of the fact of it having the headwaters of, sorry, George Davis Creek on it, and the impact, the environmental impact. And that's when, so when you look at the environmental impact statement and with the wedding cake approach, I, all I can do is apologize for what happened next door to you. That was never anything I would have thought would have been built there. I just don't know what to say. But, that being said, those areas and that area, I, I still think belongs as a B because of the fact that it still does have that headwaters of that creek and everything on it. And so anyway, I'm, anyway, that's what, that'd be why I would choose we on that property.
Very good. So I want to address and ask clarification from, from staff really quick, because the Buildable Lands report was brought up. And I, I researched this in depth, and in fact, Mr. Pyle and I sat down and I talked to him about that very thing. And my underlying question was, is I, my concern was that if we change the zoning on this property, would it alter the Buildable Lands report? And David and I sat down and went through that. And David, correct me if I, if I misspeak here, but the answer is no, it doesn't. And the reason that it doesn't alter the Buildable Lands report is the same thing the councilmember Hornish said, which is there are 2,000 units in the town center. It doesn't matter where you put them. We're moving jelly beans around on a map. And so therefore, the Buildable Lands report says there's 2,000 less whatever has been built in our Buildable Lands report. This is, it doesn't matter what we do to this parcel. Councilmember Hornish also mentioned that our concurrency methodology will catch any traffic impacts that this will have on that. And from a legislative perspective, changing the zoning here in the future could alter the 2,000 units, but there is a very large lift involved in that. And, and correct me if I'm wrong on this as well, is that I think earlier you said if somebody was going to bump up against that 2,000, that they would be required to do another EIS. But would there be a legislative action in advance of that? I mean, would there be any point in someone doing an EIS to say there's no environmental impact for going over 2,000 without council saying we even want to go over 2,000? How would that play out?
So the, the EIS would be in order to enable a legislative action to go above the 2,000. So what it would be is an amendment to, it's on, the town center plan. And that is what the, the staff interpretation says. And that is the exact question that we were internally asking ourselves. Although it is not codified in the code, the code itself, 21B, Title 21B, that there is a 2,000 cap, 2,000 unit cap, it's not in the code itself, it is in the plan, which is a higher-level document than the code. So what we do is we go to the policy document that states that the intent behind the plan is that we are going to build a town center and that there will be these types of units, commercial and residential, and that as we get closer to the caps that we've put in place, we want to reassess the plan. We want to understand what we've done right, what we've done not so well, what we've done wrong. And we want to make adjustments to the plan in order to help build it out in a way that makes sense to the community at, at that time. Because you can have a large, a long lapse of time between when a plan is adopted and when it's actually reaching full implementation, and the community can be very different at that time than what it was when it was originally envisioned.
Thank you. So I watched the planning commission meeting where they held their public hearing and had some discussion. I appreciate, and I see a couple, I think there's at least a couple planning commission members that have wandered in here. So thank you for your time in doing a deep dive in this as well. Some concerns that were expressed during the course of the planning commission meeting were relative to the schools as well as to impacts to trees. But if, again, if you consider that you're just reallocating where the housing units are going, you might save trees on another parcel, maybe not just necessarily on the San Tony parcel. So I am supportive of the town center B zoning and will be voting in favor. And I see no more lights on. Oh. Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, for many of the factors already shared, such as moving the, as mayor puts jelly beans around, it's also consistent within the 2,000 units contemplated. Some other factors that have been discussed is, is early on, the San Tonys were led to believe that this was a, a solution to pave their way to future and not overburden them and other homeowners with significant tax increases with the, the upzone that was planned at the time. So there was. So there was a, effectively, I heard handshake deal, there was some expectation that this wouldn't be so complicated. The other part about this, and you know, you put, I try to make decisions with my head, but this is one of those unusual cases where I've met the San Tonys at least three times, and I've struggled with this, and what has happened? They went in with good faith, and this, the whole world around their property collapsed around them. I really feel like they were invaded, and they're a 38-year residence. You saw all the people marching. It wasn't about their property, it was about their character. And then sometimes you just have to make a decision with your heart. So I'm sitting on the fence and I'm making the decision with my heart. I support the Plan B, or the Zone B.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I guess one of the things I've been thinking a lot about is B versus C. And when I look at the B, it calls for the townhouses. And while the Ichijio property is technically zoned A, what's up against the edge there are townhouses. So I'm wondering if we should consider Town Center C, because that would help to further taper it as we get to the edge. As you pointed out, there's just the one additional property left. So looking at that, the idea of tapering, again, while it is technically a Town Center A, what's right on the edge there right now are already townhouses. And so do we want to take this opportunity to make that C so that we can, we can make that tapering happen? And so I only throw that out because I've been trying, I've been struggling with that in my head, looking at the maps and looking at kind of what's happening on the ground. And I absolutely, I've met with the San Tonys many times as well, and I think that they're wonderful people, and they're very upstanding, and I don't want to see any harm come to them. But at the same time, it is our, it is our job to make the best decision for the city. And we last year had to make a very challenging decision for, well, actually, we made a decision against a very worthy charity that lost out on over $1 million because we were not willing to kind of grandfather them into something, a permit that they had that had expired. So I want to make sure that we're considering all the factors, and certainly I want to thank the San Tonys for being such amazing citizens and for continuing to want to live here. And so I am supportive of upzoning. I just want to make sure we make the right upzoning decision. So I don't know if staff has any thoughts on, you know, given that the Ichijio there, is there any other, anything else we should consider when we're looking at it, whether it should be, you know, as we taper it out, if it should be a B or a C?
Point of order. We have a motion and we have comments. I don't think we need to have more staff questions.
If you're making a formal amendment, then to the motion on the floor.
You know what? You know what? Councilmember Hornish, I think you're out of order, and I am really done with your point of order.
Councilmember Stewart, let's keep our cool at the dais, please.
Point of order, I ask.
State your point.
Point of order, I ask that we keep the comments to the motion on the floor. We're going to be here all night. It's 9 o'clock.
Too late.
Councilmember Stewart, you may make an amendment to the motion if you want to discuss altering it off of...
Are you supporting his point of order or not? You have to make a ruling.
I support the fact that we have to discuss the motion unless you are making an amendment. If you are making amendment to the motion on the floor, then you may make your amendment and...
I thought we were discussing the motion on the floor, and I'm asking some questions as to whether I think it's a valid motion, and I would like to get some more information before I make a decision.
It's not an appropriate point for it to be made during deliberation.
The deliberation is on the B, so if you'd like to make an amendment, then we can discuss C.
Fine. I move, well, I don't know yet, because I want to understand, there wasn't a motion on the floor before, to know whether it should be a B or a C. So I have a question to staff. Is it acceptable for me to ask a question around what is up against that property line? And is there anything else that may be planned along that property line that would be out of line with townhouses? Why is that an inappropriate question to ask before we make a really important decision?
I think if it's under the context of the motion on the floor, which is B, then I think it probably is appropriate. Can I ask staff to just pull up the map so that we can see that? Because that might assist council in being able to look at what's going on. But the motion on the floor is relative...
I understand that.
There's the map.
So right now, along the border, they're all townhouses. Is that correct? Am I allowed to ask that question?
The north side.
Yes.
To the north, yes, that's correct. Those are towns.
So I would like to make an amendment that says I believe that it would be more appropriate to upzone this to a Town Center C, because while it is a Town Center A, what's along that border is already townhouses, which is consistent with Town Center B, and this would allow us to taper this down to a Town Center C as we approach the edge of the Town Center area.
Okay, I do not have a second. Councilmember Ritchie.
I'd like to call the question, please.
I still have another light on, so unless Councilmember Valderrama wants to...
We need to vote on the call to question, and if not, then if it passes, then...
Okay, let's vote. Okay. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. We're calling the question. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, which is for a land use map alteration, not a rezone of the San Tony parcel to Town Center B, say aye, and please raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. By a vote of 7-0, the motion passes. That will conclude that public hearing, and I think we need a break before we dive into the next set of hearings, if we can.